Here we go. Okay, so today is March 24th. This is the fourth meeting of the Tunbridge Planning Commission Legal Trails Discussion. Thanks, everybody, for joining. It's 6:34 by my computer clock and it looks like we've got, at this point in time, 28 folks on the call. So another great turnout for Tunbridge tonight. Just want to review the agenda. So pretty much same structure as what we've used for the past three meetings. I'll review the agenda and then we'll go over some Zoom guidelines and then we'll jump into content. So tonight, just going over some of the website updates since two weeks ago. We'll have, we have two guest speakers with us who are generous with their time tonight. Carl Demrow and Tim Tierney. And then at the end of the meeting, we'll go over some next steps overview. So that's to look forward to and we'll have some time for questions at the end as well as after the speakers. So for Zoom guidelines, if you want to have video on or off, your choice, please keep yourself muted. If you want to use the chat, people really haven't been using the chat in these meetings. Feel free to do that if you'd like. They have moved the raise hand button. If you're on your computer joining, it's under the reaction. So on the bottom of your screen, if you move your mouse, you'll see your toolbar come up. There's a reactions button. That's like a little smiley face and you click on that. And then one of the options is raise hand. Using that feature, I know I've talked about this before, but we've got quite a few new people on this week. Allows me to see who has asked to speak in order so I can facilitate well and make sure everybody gets time to ask questions. Particularly when the speakers are presenting, that's really key because we'll just have limited time for questions. And I want to make sure that we give everybody enough time to ask their questions. So if you can't figure out how to raise your hand, you could turn your camera on and like physically raise your hand. Because once you turn your camera on, you come to the top of my screen as well. So I can see you. So a couple of different options there for how you want to speak. And it looks like we've got, must be Kevin Rose on the phone. So Kevin, you know, the drill, whenever you want to say something, just go ahead and unmute yourself and chime in and we'll slot you in. Everybody else is on the computer, it looks like. Go ahead, Kevin, did you want to say something?
No, I was just going to let you know that I had heard you.
Awesome. Thank you. You know, we've been at this for a while and I know what your phone number is.
Right.
Okay, so that's our regular Zoom guidelines. As always, will be considered of each other's viewpoints and opinions and questions and try not to speak over each other if at all possible. And that, that's that. I believe both of the speakers will not be screen sharing. So we'll just be looking at each other for tonight, which is nice. On the website, if you visited that of late, you'll see that Jeff Hansen has put up a lot of updates again. So that's on the Planning Commission page, on the town webpage. The resource guide has not been updated since the last meeting, but there has been a number of other uploads that he's put up. So submitted testimonies, history and laws of Vermont Town Roads, Roads and Highways document, Mountain Bike Association map, different articles. So those are all really good resources again for people to use as we continue to learn about what's our options are and what we should be asking questions about regarding this issue. So if you have any trouble accessing those documents or if you've sent me something and you don't see it there, feel free to reach out. I have gotten maybe eight or so additional letters of testimony over the past couple of days and I haven't had time to get those over to Jeff. So if you've sent me something since Monday, it's definitely not on there, but I will work on that likely tomorrow. So you'll see those up in the next few days. Any questions about the website or the information that's contained there? Okay, hearing none. So we are going to then jump right in to hearing from Carl, Carl Demrow, who has a lot of experience with trails development and considerations to make in both trails and policy aspects about it. So Carl, you've got 20 minutes. I know you've got another engagement to go to. So we'll do about 20 minutes. I'll send you a message when we're getting close to that time and then about 10 minutes of questions if that still works for you.
Sounds good, Laura. Thanks. Thanks for the introduction. My name's Carl Demrow. I live in Corinth, just a little bit north of you all. And like Tim Tierney, who will also be presenting this evening. I've been involved in trail management and construction and design for, well, geez, over 30 years now. It's been, been a few years. So I have some general thoughts for you this evening and some of them are, some of them are geared towards the issue of mixed use. But I also want to talk a little bit about just resource management in particular. We oftentimes find ourselves using trails that were not intended for the use that they were built for. And I'm referring to, you know, a woods road that was built to get some timber out 60 years ago in one winter. And those trails or those roads can often become sort of thought of as something that might be great for use at any time, although they may have been meant to only be used during the winter. And you know, snowmobile trails are also a good example of that. They're, they're made for use during just one season when there's snow. So there's no real impact to the soil resource. But if they were used for something else in the summer, that may be very different because they may be on the fall line, which is a sort of a, some skiers know what that means, but in the trails world, it means the path of least resistance for water. And those trails that are built on the fall line are going to become at some point stream beds if they get any sort of use at all. So there's something that we all try to stay away from these days when we're building trails. And in terms of trail maintenance, they are the most rebuilt and problematic sections of trail for anyone to take care of. So I think it's really important to consider that when you're looking at your town roads and town trails, what were they originally meant for? What are they being for, used for now? Can the resource handle what, what sort of use they're getting now compared to what they were originally designed and built for? And in many cases, use has increased on just, just about everywhere. And particularly in the past year with more folks getting outside and not being able to travel for recreation. I know that the trails around our little hilltop here, I see more people on them than I used to. So just something to think about. We need to do what's right by the resource. And there are lots of places in Vermont where, and particularly in towns. And if you come to some of the towns in Northern Orange County, you'll see a lot of damage from motorized vehicles on private trails and town roads up here. So that's just a quick little bit on resource management. I had just had to throw that in there because it's, it's very important that we do right by the resource when we are making our decisions around trails. Laura and Rudy asked me to talk about multiple user policy implications on trails. A lot of organizations that own land that have trails on them, for instance, land trusts or other private, private entities that aren't subject to sort of public laws and public, and the, and the public good. They get around the issue of user conflicts by eliminating users on their trails. So they may say, this is a trail that's for foot traffic only. Or they may decide that trails are to be closed during certain times of the year, like mud season, for example, which is a good idea. That's a good idea for the resource and a lot of the soils here in Vermont can't handle use during mud season. But I don't think that the Tunbridge Planning Commission necessarily has that option. And so the question is, what, what does that mean? Well, if the resource can handle a group of different users and, you know, I wouldn't recommend to any mountain bikers or horseback riders that they go out this time of year unless it's on a trail that has a imported surface, like a gravel surface that was brought in. Most of the soils around Vermont can't handle that type of use this time of year. But if, if there are going to be multiple users, then what that generally requires is a very substantial educational campaign by the managing agency. And what I mean by that is basically changing people's expectations or managing their expectations of what to find when they're on a trail. A lot of us are used to going out and expecting that we're not going to see anyone. I'm expecting to have some peace and quiet and oftentimes that's what we get. But there are types of trail uses that are particularly rife with conflict. And I'm just gonna, I'm going to name one of them here and those are bicycles and horses. Together, bicycles and horses are difficult to manage for without some very aggressive educational campaigns around right of ways and yielding. And even in the case of a good educational campaign, there are also trails that are not really appropriate for both uses. They may be trails that have shorter lines of sight or maybe trails that have more grade on them. So a bike is going to go a little bit faster. So there are places where that's not appropriate to have multiple uses. But a lot of, you know, what we've got here, class four roads, trails that have good lines of sight and are a little bit wider could be used for multiple uses, provided that that educational component is, is present. And there are land management agencies out west and also here in the east that have done that. They've provided signage to let people know that they need to, that basically bikers yield to hikers and everyone yields to horses. And have, you know, they've tried to basically get people to be a little bit more considerate of other folks when they're on the trail. Now, that's not to say that every trail is going to work for everyone. You know, there are mountain bike trails that are built out there that are built to basically be self-maintaining in terms of the surfacing and to provide a certain experience for a mountain biker. It might be a fast downhill experience with lots of, lots of turns and maybe some bank areas. That type of a trail is not going to be good probably for a horseback rider or even a pedestrian, even if there aren't bikes on it. So there might need to be some work done around looking at what you have for trails and making some determinations around what would really work on them. Is it a trail that's wide enough to accommodate multiple user groups? Is it a trail that has surfacing that's not going to, or a tread surface that isn't going to force people onto one side or the other because it's wet for a good chunk of the year? Or trails that have minimal grades? For example, you don't want to have people coming downhill on a bike and finding as they come around a corner that there's people there or, or horseback rider. So I think it's important to, you know, do some, look, take a look at what you've got in town. Figure out what types of trails would, or what trails that you have in your inventory would work okay for a larger group of users, given the need for education of all those users. And then it may be that there are trails in town that are just not going to make sense for all user groups. And then of course, that would have to be signed too. So I, I, those are just some thoughts and I'm guessing that it's probably going to be more helpful to answer questions from you than for me to talk anymore. So I'm happy to do that now, Laura, if that makes sense.
Thanks, Carl. And Rudy did share some documents with me that I'm going to add to our resource library about some trails that you had previously worked on. So I don't know if there's any examples of mixed use trail systems that you've been engaged with or that you helped advise on that you could send along that we could post. I think that would certainly be helpful to see the examples of, of what you've done in the past too.
I think the reports that Rudy, you know, we were basically making recommendations to a couple of different state agency here in Vermont and then another one down in Massachusetts after doing a pretty thorough assessment of a couple of trail systems. And we did make recommendations in those, those reports on types of use and those recommendations were made based on, you know, what I just shared with you. But I will say that, you know, if, if you are going to have trails that are going to accommodate both horseback riders and bicyclists, there needs to be a very substantial education campaign to be sure that users really understand what's expected of them behavior wise.
Thanks. It looks like our first question is from Todd and Betsy.
Thanks, Laura. Hey, thanks, Carl, for joining us with your expertise. I liked your comment, which I have abided by and probably many people on this call, that bikes yield to hikers and everybody yields to horseback riders. I think you're right about education. I think a lot of us already have that education. My question to you, with your 30 years of experience, we are strictly dealing with legal trails here. And Tunbridge has four of them. Are you aware in your work or anecdotally of legal trails here in Vermont where restrictions have been enacted and imposed against or limiting access? And since you brought up horses and bikes or any other types of use, obviously, we don't need to go into motorized use because I think there are a lot of restrictions about motorized use on legal trails. But as far as horseback riding and bikes, are you aware of any towns that have enacted restrictions on those uses?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. That doesn't mean that that hasn't happened, but I think that might be a better question for the League of Cities and Towns or, or maybe Forest Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions out there for Carl? Michael, go ahead.
In your work or work you've known of anyway, do you, do you see inter, well, multiple users working together or volunteer commitments and maintaining these roads? And what kind of forms do those take in, in the communities that you've seen, if, if at all? And by the way, thanks for being here.
Thanks, Michael. I, you know, I know that the two examples that come to mind, and this is not entirely on town roads and trails, would be VAST and VASSA. And I know that, that they both are involved in working with towns on some of their class four roads and town trails. I don't know of any other groups who are doing that sort of work. There may be some towns around the state instances where that is happening. Tim might, may know more about that than me. But I don't know of any groups other than VASSA and VAST here in this part of the state that are doing that type of work. And, you know, oftentimes on the class four roads in particular, they are, again, being used in a way that they were not originally meant to be used. So they might not have originally been meant for vehicle traffic. They might have been made, meant just for some farm, traffic between farms or traffic back in the 19th century. And so although they might have gotten, you know, paved with gravel a few times or get some maintenance every few years, you know, the idea of helping out the town with some of the maintenance on them, I think that would be great. I mean, towns could use more help with this sort of thing. But I don't, I can't think of anything off, off the top of my mind of examples where groups other than VASSA and VAST are doing that.
I think it would have been, it'd be hard to find any, any of these old roads that were originally designed for, say, bikes. I just don't think anyone would hazard their life with the first bikes or early bikes on these roads.
Right, the penny farthings would not make it very far on a, on a Vermont class four road.
That's what I was envisioning, a penny farthing going down the road. John, you've got your hand up.
I'm unmuted now.
Yep. Yep, we can hear you and see you.
Good. I guess, thinking about this issue of conflicts, I guess the surveying literature, my, my observation is that the, the, the uses that are essentially the most dangerous and, and arguably presenting greatest conflict tend to, the users of, of, for those who engage in those activities tend to think that multiple use will work out. I, I'm struck by the American Hiking Society's position. They have a very in-depth analysis of this question of mountain biking versus hiking and the question of segregated trails. And they have this sort of firm statement that foot-only trails offer the best opportunity to design sustainable trails that best meet the unique needs of hikers and provide them with the highest quality experiences. And they go on to recognize that sometimes there will be multiple use trails and the conflicts have to be dealt with. But, but their headline is that from a hiking point of view, the, the best experience is provided by foot-only trails. So I'm just curious what your thought on that is.
Um, you know, the American Hiking Society has a constituency that is just hikers. And I guess I, I understand that and I think they do fine work for their constituency. I, I will say that you know, the, some of the best trail designers right now, and when I, when I say best trail designers, I mean, in terms of protecting the resource are mountain bike designers. And I'm, you know, I'm a hiker, I'm a mountain biker. I don't tend to ride horses very much. And I see both sides of these arguments. But in terms of what's been done these days for the resource, mountain biker, mountain bike trail designers have figured out that they, they've figured out a way to be the, some of the best trail designers out there these days. And, you know, they're, they're designing trails that are just for the mountain biking experience. But they've, they've, they know how to do it in a way that is least disruptive to the resource. If, if, if I had my way, I would, you know, I also ride mountain bikes on our hilltop here, but I mostly walk it. I'm not going to be riding a mountain bike up there until sometime in May. And, but I think it's important for us all to share the trail. If, if there's room for all of us on a trail, if a trail is, works for multiple use, we need to figure out ways to, to do that. If the idea is to just hike and that's it, there are hiking only trails where people can go to hike and there are mountain biking only trails where people can go to mountain bike. But we don't really have that luxury when it comes to public assets. Unless we have a very, very, very good reason from a resource standpoint to exclude other users. So I think it's best for us to figure out a way to all work together and accommodate most uses, uses in a place where those uses can be accommodated. That's just my own, my own personal thought.
Eliza, go ahead.
Carl, you mentioned education campaigns and needing if there's mixed use, suggesting that that's really important. And I wondered if you had, know of examples of successful ones. What do good education campaigns look like to educate trail users?
Well, I think that, Eliza, thanks for that question. I think they generally rely on signage at trailheads and at access points for trails to let users know what's expected of them. Sorry, it's my clock going off there. And brochures and pamphlets and other types of public information, whether it's in town publications or town newsletters to let folks know what's expected of users when they're, when they're on your trails. There are examples of signs that are used. It's sort of, sort of like, you may have seen them, it's like a typical triangular yield sign. And it has one corner, there's a hiker, another corner is a horseback rider, another corner is a biker. And basically what it says is everyone yields to horses on there and mountain bikes yield to hikers. So there are signs out there that have been used for this type of thing. And I think there are examples of places where it works. But again, you need to have, you know, a single, a, a single track, a single file wide trail is probably not the sort of place that, that is steep and rocky and goes downhill. Probably not the sort of place to be looking to accommodate everyone.
Thanks. And then Lori Berger, you're next.
Hi, thank you. I wanted to ask Carla a question piggybacking off of Todd's question, which was about what other towns have done and if we would be unusual if we chose to mandate use in a particular way or restrict use in a particular way. And my question was whether or not other towns have public trails that go right through people's yards in the same way that the ones that concern, certainly concern me the most do. For example, the crossroad, which goes right by my sister-in-law's house. And I know that John has several roads that converge in his yard. And so I was wondering if Tunbridge is unusual in that respect or if you see that in other towns as well and whether that might have any bearing on the decision-making process.
I don't know the answer to that question, Lori. I think Tunbridge is unique in the sense that it is having a discussion about these issues. I don't know of a lot of other towns, particularly towns the size of Tunbridge, that are talking about, about trails and trail use and managing use and users on town trails. I think most of what's happening here in Orange County right now, particularly in Northern Orange County, it's discussions about motorized vehicles and ATVs on class four roads and town trails. So what I'm, what I'm hearing and what I've read on your resource pages, you're all having an entirely different discussion, which I think is, is great. I'm, I'm glad you're not running into the same sorts of problems that other towns up here in the northern part of the county are running into. And it seems to me you're really undertaking And it seems to me you're really undertaking this in a very deliberate and thoughtful manner, which I have great appreciation for.
Carl, I've got two questions for you, but I'll see if anybody else has other questions before I ask mine. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, Laura, this is Kevin, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, thinking about the, you know, what you said about mountain bike trail design. Are, are you referring more to where the trails are located, you know, by design and otherwise, you know, designing a network, sorting out the, the where is most appropriate? Or are you talking about, you know, say in the case of Tunbridge, where you've got a, a simple right-of-way to, to deal within and designing a solution for that, you know, resource constraint? You know, in other words, and given perhaps less than desirable place to put the trail, engineering solutions, you know? You know, for instance, two of the, the trails here in Tunbridge, in the middle of them is, is what, you know, very possibly could be class-three wetlands, et cetera. You know, in addition to running through dooryards. So I guess, you know, I was curious about the distinction between trail design as far as most appropriate places to route things or how to engineer it if it has to fall within a given constraint.
Thanks, Kevin. I, I would say when I'm, when I'm talking about mountain bike trail designers, I'm talking about people who are designing brand-new trails. So not retrofitting existing town trails or, or class-four roads. And my, you know, my opening comments, and I, I'll go back to those for a moment. There are a lot of trails and whether they're horseback, anything that, anything that is not being used for what it was designed for have probably has some problems on it. And you talk about your, the town trail that goes through maybe a class, class-three wetland. Probably it's not, not, you know, being used for what it was originally designed for, if that's the case. And I, I would never condone putting a trail through a crest, class-three wetland, whether it's brand-new or old. So, uh, but in terms of, and there are, there are a number of people who live in Vermont who design and build mountain bikes full-time. And they are very good at designing brand-new trails that lay very lightly on the land and are, you know, self-draining and very easy on the resource. Does that, does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I think your, your opening comments, you know, kind of, you know, spoke to, to, you know, what I was concerned about. And that's the resource. And, you know, looking at some of the, the trails that we've got, you know, today, one might say I would probably never consider putting a, a trail or a rotor, you know, knowing what we know about resource management or at least, you know, where our values are in terms of resource management. You know, we probably wouldn't have put these things there. So, uh, you know, my, my interest is in, you know, potentially looking for alternative routes or, you know, perhaps exploring options, you know, with cooperative landowner agreements, et cetera, to perhaps find places to, to reroute trails that, that have some resource constraints.
Kevin, I, I think that's really wise. And I can't tell you how many times a client has said to me, you know, I'd like to, like a trail up to, from A, point A to point B. And there's an old road that goes from point A up to point C. And maybe you can use part of that. And almost always, the old roads are bad ideas. Because they are, you know, they haven't been managed, they're, and they, and they wouldn't be appropriate for the sort of use that, or the, the use that the client is discussing. They may be sunken, they may be undrainable. And it would be, you'd end up spending a lot of money to, in the end, have something that's just going to cause you more headaches down the line.
All right, we'll take this last question, then I'm going to ask mine. The last question goes to P2 Environmental. If you just state your name, that'd be great, too.
Hi, this is Scott Beaver.
Oh, hi, Scott.
It's really more of a, sort of a just comment rather than a question for Carl. And it's great to see your face, Carl. I just want to, you know, I, I just feel like things get, are getting skewed a bit, not by Carl. But I want to make sure we're, we stay on track with kind of what we're focused on here. The short town trails that were once town roads. We're not talking about single-track hiking backpacking trails. We're, we're not talking about single-track mountain bike trails. You know, we're talking about short roads that are town land, town right-of-way, that people stroll down, that people casually ride their gravel bikes or, or their mountain bikes down. I've done it for decades here in town. You know, that's what we're talking about. We are not talking about putting in these burned, crazy mountain bike trails or having single-track anything. It's the same dimensions of a town road. And, you know, the amount of tearing up and ripping through that's going to happen, you know, is not going to be bad. In fact, the horses would clearly do the most damage of anything that we're talking about. But I, so I just, I just feel like things get sort of skewed sometimes. And, you know, we're talking about wetlands, you know? Yeah, we're talking about wet areas, but I don't think we're talking about wetlands. So I just want to, hopefully we can really stay sort of in our, in our tunnel here as to what these town trails truly are. Thank you.
Laura, this is Brenda. I've been trying to raise my hand on this thing. And that new way of doing it isn't working well, obviously.
Sure, go ahead.
So thanks, Carl. I'm on the planning commission. And, you know, a couple of the roads we're looking at are, are not in great shape, to say the least, and need some work. If we're, you'll be such talking bikes, horses and everything else. What's a, what's a list of, and where do we go as a planning commission to get expert advice on water management for washed-out areas? Water that is running down through a lot of these, these old roads? And if they, I think, you know, if, if you took the Ranger, Michael could say how many. But I, I helped with it last time and it was up to 400 bikes. So, and they thought they could do a lot better.
300, 320 was the count.
Yeah, and he said he could do, you know, it's going to get bigger. And I said, wow, you're really growing. And he says, oh, you haven't seen nothing yet. So how do, where do we go to water management to take a look at some of these? So we do the responsible thing for drainage? I mean, the town's going to be responsible and accountable. It's a wildlife quarter. I think one is in a wildlife quarter that we keep hearing on the planning commission. Where do we go there? And how do we address a volume issue? If it's not just, you know, kind of local people getting out, getting their kids out, but we're talking about bigger things that go into the cloud and, you know, become more established as recreational places? Okay, that's my question.
Well, I think, you know, the, the, I've said for years, the three most important words in, in trail management and maintenance are, are drainage, drainage and drainage. So, you know, if you've got areas that are high use, they probably need to be hardened and drained better. And that means gravel and possibly culverts or drainage ditches and that type of thing. That's not always what, you know, people sort of think of as they're walking down a country road. But that's the only way that resources or resource can handle increased use. I don't, I can't answer your, the, your, the wildlife question. That's, that's a different pay grade than mine. But I, I do know if you've got a lot of use on a, on a road that's having some problems with, with water and drainage, you know, generally gravel and, and, and drainage ditches or culverts or other water diversions are the way to go. And maybe even if you can afford it, some fabric underneath it all, too, so it doesn't all disappear during wet season.
Right, this is actually going to be the last question. Carl, I'll email you my question so that Dan Seaton's iBook can ask a question. Sorry, I don't know your name.
Actually, this is Alison Erickson. I'm on my husband's iBook, Dan Seaton. So I, I, I just have to agree with the last person ahead of Brenda. I think it was Scott who was talking, saying it seems like we're getting a bit off topic. And I really fully appreciate Carl's input. I, I know Carl personally, and hi, Carl. I, I, I fully, I have a lot of confidence in his, his education training and, and input. But I feel like what we're talking about here is whether or not mountain bikes should be permitted or biking should be permitted on these trails. We're not talking about whether or not we should be building trails that are suited to mountain bikes or to horses or to snowmobiles or to four-wheelers. Because if we're going to be examining, you know, a particular use of these trails, we should be examining very closely all uses of these trails and how, you know, i- is it okay to have a trail across a wet area that is, you know, being used by horses? Is it okay, you know, that we're using the trails for four-wheelers? I don't know. It, it, it's, it seems to me that we ought to be looking at whether or not we can use these trails for any purposes, not just one purpose. That's really.
Yeah, thanks. And I'll, I'll just remind everybody that we are, our task is to create a policy recommendation for the select board about use of legal trails. We're not strictly looking at mountain bikes, gravel bikes, road bikes, horses, skiers, hikers, bikers. You know, last time I said pogo sticks and camel riders. And I mean that in jest, but also in seriousness, that right now there's no policy. So they're open for use, for anybody to use them on any sort of transit mode. We are attempting to put potentially some bounds on that and understanding what that means for multiple uses, which is why we brought Carl and Tim here tonight to talk to us about what does multiple use look like? How can we be thoughtful about how we approach multiple uses? So I think the conversation frequently steers to bikes versus everybody else. But really, it's every use is under consideration. And, you know, rightfully, there's some places, you know, if you go to national parks and state parks, there's places where you're not supposed to walk either. So there's considerations of all uses depending on the landscape in which a trail crosses that we need to be respectful of and make decisions about. So Carl, I wanted very much thank you for your time tonight. And I'm sure we'll be in touch by email. I've got a couple of questions that I'll send you. And if other folks have questions that they didn't have a chance to ask you, I'll send those along as well. And I, I do appreciate you taking the time to talk to us and give your, give your advice.
Be happy to answer any other questions, Laura, that you've got or if anyone else thinks of anything. I, I'm sorry, I've got to sign off. I would really like to stay and hear what Tim has to say. I'm sorry to be missing that, but wanted to quickly say hi to Tim, too.
I feel like I'm following the Beatles here, Carl.
All right, well, good night, everyone, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, Carl. All right, so Tim, you're in the hot seat now. I'll let you introduce yourself, Tim. And I, in full disclosure, have worked together in our different roles in different state agencies. I work for the Agency of Agriculture, Tim for the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, which he has not yet renamed to the Agency of Community Development and Commerce so that it would have a better acronym, like, like a favorite band of his, I think. So Tim, take it away.
Yes, for those about to rock. Yeah, so my name's Tim Cheney. Thank you for letting me into Tunbridge, whether virtually or not. One of my favorite places, you know, a wonderful little corner of Vermont. I live up in the Northeast Kingdom and I do work for the Agency of Commerce and Community Development. And my day job is actually doing international trade. So, but before I built bridges metaphorically with people from foreign countries, I spent, it's Carl's, I spent, I've been in a long time. I worked for the Washington State Parks doing trails. Then I worked for the National Park Service. I was actually in charge of the long trail from the non Appalachian Trail Section. But I call it, back then it was the taps of the, in the long trail to the Canadian border. And then after that, I was the Trails Director for the Adronic Mountain Club in those two-million-acre park as well. And then after that, I moved over to grow the Kingdom Trail Association, which is known as a mountain bike destination. But it is actually a multi-use, year-round recreational trail system. And a little different, it was basically established to help out local commerce. And I don't think that's the intent of what you folks are doing here. So, but I obviously have built, I've built trails for horses. I've built them for ATVs. I've built them for snowmobiles. I've built them for cross-country skiing and mountain biking and hiking. And, and I think I've kind of like the advent of new mountain bike trail maintenance and management since the 90s when I started has really evolved to a really high degree. So I think I can talk to and speak to. And a lot of times it's, uh, people ask, well, how can I fix the trail? Well, it's almost you have to go, we have to go see it, see what, what's the issue? But it sounds like you're talking about class-four roads that were old, cart roads, tractor roads, probably even Model T roads. I mean, I, but a lot of them, right, the problem is, I think it was mentioned earlier that it was like a wetland. So a lot of times it's because the no drainage was installed that the trail itself is actually the wettest part of the surrounding resource, right? So sometimes drainage can do a bit. And sometimes the maintenance, back in the day where they just put corduroy down on the trails, didn't help with drainage either. They basically created dams all the way down the line. But we can get into that. But it sounds like you're dealing with connector roads if I'm going to, that's what I would call these is, these are, um, and it's obviously, what's nice about these roads, they're also can be used for hikers and bikers, non-motorized use, basically, skiers. And it can be used for all levels of ability. I don't know the steepness of it because steepness tends to be the issue with bikes and skiing and even sometimes hiking, actually, right? So, but, and then also, steepness has a lot to do with the amount of erosion that can occur. Because a lot of these old roads tend to be the lowest point in the surrounding natural resource. So just by default, as people use the path of resistance, and Carl mentioned it, water takes a path of resistance. And if there's not drainage or some kind of effort put in to get water off a trail, it'll erode, just the speed will pick up, it'll collect or do damage. But you can change, and I've done it many times, you can change a carrying capacity of any trail. I have built rock staircases up Amber Sand Mountain and Loews Path in the Whites and Mount Mansfield in the Greens. And we have changed the amount of traffic that a hiking trail can handle. Because actually, the hiking trails historically are the worst trails because people had a destination in mind. I don't know if you want to get into the history of trails, but they used to go from point A of a fall line up a stream. And, and now it's going to, it's years and years and years of reclamation of the resource because they weren't designed well. And now people are designing trails much better. So it's also looking at a trail like what, what's usable? What can you fix and what can you adjust? That means where can you move it all wave on, on terrain? And using different switchbacks to just moving it to a place where you can put the proper drainage or allowing the tread to drain without spending a lot of money. So it's looking at like, what kind of money is it going to take? What kind of times are you going to take? What are our resources? But it's varying methods. And you also have to look at what the uses are. And I think that's the key about multiple use. If it's hiking, you can actually build aggressive water bars. A hiker can get over an aggressive water bar. Horses tend not to like them as much either, the steeper water bars. If you have to put a bridge in place somewhere, a horse bridge has to be 10 feet wide. Horses do not like narrow. a horse bridge has to be 10 feet wide. Horses do not like narrow bridges. And a biker wants a narrow bridge. So a lot of times, but, but it's using multiple use, you're going to have to accommodate all those uses. And it tends to be long, shallow water bars. We're building up one side of an old road. So it allows it to drain. A lot of times this is hand tools, but now people are doing it with backhoes. It sounds like you can get in there with small backhoes and do the work. Now you're, it's cheaper and easier. But there's also ways to employ youth, you know, bring in youth corps in there from Vermont, getting a grant from the Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative as well, or various organizations will give you grants for this kind of trail work. Because I think at the end of the day, this is about the health and wealth of a community. And it's a, this is an asset to be used. It's exercise. It's being outdoors. It's, it's why you live in Vermont. It's, it's why we're coming here. This is a something that we all should take care of and that you can take your children with you, your family, and just yourself here. To, I mean, it's really cuts down on future health bills. I mean, this is something we should be encouraging, not discouraging. And when it comes to mountain bikes, and I'm a hiker, and I went and I've managed the mountain bike network, probably one of the best known in North America. There's some things I found about bikers that were truly amazing. I found that bikers gave back more. I mean, if you want to do trail maintenance, hikers are great, bikers were better. They would come out and work and help you create a sustainable trail. They would continue to do so because you can go out and build things, but you'd need to maintain those structures as well. So, so if someone will come out of here cleaning those water bars or checking the drain engine, getting rid of a fallen tree. So people don't go around it in a road thing. So, so it's a bikers were an excellent stewards to trail maintenance. I also found that hikers don't camp on your land. They just stay on the trail, bike through it, and they're through quicker than if they were, if they were hiking. They don't litter. They're just biking through. So it wasn't a problem keeping people shortcutting the trail on a bike, which happens on hiking trails quite a bit. But again, it's a, you're dealing with a a resource, a trail is a resource. And it's also has, it's a continual maintenance issue. And if you go put in, install things that can actually cut down on that maintenance, and it's, it's usually pretty, it's not that difficult. As Carl was saying that, you know, sometimes you have to move it. So be it. If not, you can put in structures and just have to make sure that they allow for all the activities that you are trying to put in there. And what I mean by that, if it's a, a mountain bike trail, it's just a different water bar. It's just, it's kind of a, it's a more work. And it's just kind of longer and shallower. But basically, if you have a water bar that's an inch tall, that's a lot of water. And if you build it right, you're just trying to get, you're just trying to get water off that trail. So it doesn't continue to erode and pick up the soil and speed and erode more. And also making it very friendly for the, the user to utilize. And it's a, it's a, we always think, you gotta think like the stupidest person and plan for it. And that's where those signs and chicanes need to be built. If you need to stop people to get them to read, a lot of times people will not read a bulletin board. So you make it where they have to. You also, you know, I mean, it is, it's a constant education. I've been involved with recreation for so many years. Education is, it's a number one thing. If you hike on Mount Mansfield, I have built trails up there to keep people away from the Arctic Alpine Tundra. And it's amazing how many times you have to repeat that all the way down to a human being to stay off. So after a while you manage it, you, you build trails, you have to build scree walls. And I mean, every outdoor recreation is managing people. And it's educating people and it's a constant thing, but it does work. People will listen because it's a, it's a privilege too. And there's people out there that are maintaining these trails that can make these trails suitable for everybody. And right, and once in a while you're going to get a bad apple, but 99.9% of the time people will really respect it. And it's right, keeping it as an open activity for the people of your town and your area is a great thing, especially for the young folks too. I mean, but yeah, and it sounds like it's a simple connectors we're talking about here. Nothing too difficult. And if the landowners have, I know at Kingdom Trails, we had, we had landlords, 90 people, 90 landlords gave permission for this trail system. And obviously if they wanted to move it, we would move the trail anywhere they wanted us to move it. And if it's, that's something that people are willing to do, as long as they keep that right away, I would think that, that that should be something really a good compromise. And sometimes, but I, but again, I know that you can fix any trail. And the Incas built Machu Picchu a long time ago. Right? Still there and working well. So. I mean, I can talk about trails all day long. So I don't know. I, I, like Carl, I'm probably better with questions than trying to answer some of those.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, we'll open it up for questions here for about 10 or 15 minutes, if that works for you. So Michael, you get the first question.
Hey, Tim, thanks a million. It's really useful information. You know, there is a group, there is a group in the area that was formed after a four-town visiting process by BCRD, Vermont Council on Rural Development a few years ago. And, and one of the groups that grew out of that effort with members from all four communities is this four-town trails group and working on both on hiking trails and and, and a gravel route that goes on class three or better roads in the four-town area. And, you know, one, we're, we're really just getting rolling on this. And there's some really good momentum happening. One of the things we're, we are planning is, is both a survey for townsfolk in the four towns and also sort of a how, how best to do this and please help us do it, seeking public input. The other thing is that, that bringing people together in maintenance, as you had mentioned, you know, you could get user groups from all, all different types of user groups working together because everybody likes, you know, the common thing is they want to be outdoors, you enjoying the place. And what better way to do it than, than creating some sort of work parties almost to, that could be, you know, we would be glad to, to, to help coordinate, but rec departments as well. So, so really it's this idea of, you know, how, I mean, you mentioned it, but, but communities coming together to do this, 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 this work. I mean, has, have you directly experienced that?
Well, yeah, well, many, 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 many times. I mean, I've, I've had actual, you know, work groups of 100 people or more in Adirondacks working on trails. But communities coming together. I mean, you know, I mean, I heard early on, and we actually worked with the Vermont Horse Association on some trails that we, we both worked on. And, and I, and because of that, because it was making sure that the, the work done fit both uses, right, as well. But I think they were excited that, you know, they could provide money and we could provide the volunteer labor time. So that was really, a really nice thing to work together on. But, but we went and talked to them and designed the trail. So it would be good for both uses, right? And we've done the same with snowmobiles a lot of times too, because we shared the trail with fat bikes up there too. So it was, and I realized that it was both important for the economies, right? And we want to get along and work together and make sure you educate the right way. That, that was an interesting education too, because you're on a snowmobile in the middle of nowhere. And there's also there's a guy on a bike. And it was more about the safety then, right? It was, so it was making sure that we educated our bikers and also let the snow builders know that they might encounter a biker. So, but again, it's all about educating and and working together. And I think you can get a lot of communities together. And I know that like, I'm willing to come in, help as much as I can. I know that people with the Vermont State Trails Council, a lot of folks would come down and the Vermont Mountain Bike Association, the Mountain Bike Association, the International Mountain Bike Association. You can get the Green Mountain Club. I mean, there's the Vermont State Youth Corps. I mean, they're a wonderful group. I mean, all these people know what they're doing and they're going to have solutions and they, they would love to have fixed something. If that's going to be a barrier is the degradation of the environment, you know, that's something that should be fixed. And, and I think people would be more than happy to bring and actually educate how it can be done further and also how it can be maintained in the future as well. It's, it's a simple thing. And to get me out of the state office building, right? I'm all about it.
All right.
Question, Michael.
You missed that guy's speech though. I'm sorry. I'll not talk again.
You can.
I had to say.
Todd and Betsy here next. Allison, I just muted you, just so you know.
Hey, thanks, Tim, for signing up to help us with trails in your busy schedule. I want to give an example of, of a legal trail, not in Tunbridge and working with a landowner. And then I do have a question, an economic question for you. Actually, it's about some upcoming state funds, Tim, and I think you might have a sense of that. So I helped organize a small nonprofit ride for a local radio station. And we were over looking at a Chelsea option a couple of years ago, and there legal trail, it's called the Chelsea Lion Road. And I talked with the landowner about coming through that. Part of it was obscured by a lot of trees being down that would just, it was not workable. I wasn't going to be asking anybody to suddenly cut up 20 trees that have fallen over that road. He said, well, no, when you get to the top, just turn right, open the gate, go through my farm field, make sure you close the gate behind you, go down the rest of his driveway, which actually is part of the legal trail in Chelsea. And that would be great. So that was a great example of a bit of a temporary reroute for a very low impact use and working with the landowner. Now to my question, Tim. We know that the governor has proposed, and I'm pretty confident that the legislature is going to sign off on, I believe it's $21 million that will be distributed, maybe mostly by grants to communities around the state of Vermont for outdoor recreation. Do you think some of those funds for towns that, that succeed in getting grants could be used for some of this work that we've heard you and Carl talk about for towns that want to upgrade and do some water bars and, and make sure that they can preserve their trails? Is, is that, you think, is that an upcoming opportunity?
Well, I mean, there already is an existing opportunity. It's, it's, this looks like it's going to be an elevated opportunity, which, you know, I'm really thankful that's happening. I mean, being a proponent of outdoor recreation and the economy can bring to Vermont. But there, there's actually existing ways to bring that. It's through the state rec trails program, which is run by the Forest Parks and Recreation. They already have a grant program which you can apply for, and this would fit. There's also the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which, because this is a, this is a town asset, right? This is a town asset in perpetuity. So that's probably the, that's the biggest eligibility requirement of receiving Land and Water Conservation Fund money run by the same department at FPNR of Forest Parks Recreation. And then yes, there already is an existing Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative Communities Grant Program. And I've heard it's going to be five million added to that, and then five million added to state land. Build out and reclamation and stewardship in recreation assets. But again, that's all, but it's a lot of money. And that'll be applying through the Forest Parks and Recreation Program. But it's run also jointly with the Agency of Commerce and Community Development, mostly our community development staff that run that program. But that's an excellent way to get funds for that. There's also the Davis Conservation Fund. They're like a New England based. I applied to them many times at the Kingdom Trails to, to help us conserve trails, to build trails. I built interpretive trails. That's another thing thinking about too, is if you have town property, it's a way to educate your young folks and citizens of the natural one thing, things is, you know, slight interpretive trails somewhere too. I always go a long way. But yeah, so that, that was another one I would look into as well. Cause the one thing is I don't know how much work this is. I mean, having not seen the trail. So that's the, that's the hard thing for me to tell you. It's like, what, what, well, how much work is needed here? Or is this just building some hand ditches? I couldn't even tell you. Hope I answered your question, Todd.
Yeah. In fact, you, you added a lot more resources that I didn't know about. Appreciate it, Tim.
Oh, and there's even more out there. I mean, there's, you know, even looking at the, the Vermont Community Foundation is another one I would look to as well. I mean, if this is, there's so many things that trails can take off. I mean, it's also, if you're getting out there, you're getting your local schools out there, you're teaching them stewardship, conservation, recreation, health and fitness. You can get them out there working on these trails too. Ties into their science class, talking, you know, that kind of thing. Um, yeah. So there's grants there too.
All right, John, you've got the next question.
Thank you for your presentation. I think you, you addressed the question I was going to start with, which is, I think you haven't seen these trails. You, you haven't visited them. You haven't walked them, right?
I have not. Yeah, they, yeah, no. Profile these days.
Okay. Well, let me, let me just give you a little insight into some of them and, and describe the problems with, with some of them and, and get your reaction, because I think I can describe a type. There's a history to the, some of these trails, which is that they, they were roads. And then they deteriorated and they became incised and they became eroded and they're sunken roads.
Sure.
And then at some point they, they collected water on a regular basis. And they became impassable and they were effectively abandoned. And then the owners of the lands went to decades ago, went to the town and said, I, I don't want this road anymore. And it's not a road. Nobody should ever use it. And I want to turn it into a trail. And so we, we got these, these rights of way which were no good for, for roads anymore because they were too muddy and too incised. And two of the four trails we have are, I now, I now know the right terminology, on the fall line. They are at the bottom of the, of the slope. The water comes from both sides and collects. And, you know, I, I have worked on trails on my land and I deal with water bars and, you know, I understand that all that. You know, this is, this is, this is way beyond that. And it's, I, I just have a, and, and they tend to be straight shots downhill. And I, I may, you know, we can send people to the, to the moon. So I guess you could invest a lot of time and effort and resources into making these better and maintaining them. But they seem like, like failed rights of way. If you were going to choose a place in the Tunbridge landscape to have a recreational trail, they happen to be legally designated trails, but by their physical nature, they're probably the worst possible candidates in the town because they're sunken, incised, eroded rights of way. So take, I mean, just hypothetically, take my word for it, that that's the condition of some of the trails we're dealing with. How would you approach that, that management challenge?
Well, I mean, I mean, I don't know if you've ever hiked in Adirondacks or the Green Mountains, you know, right? I mean, even trail blazers, early ones, they took the path of resistance as well, right? Here's an opening, here's your trail. But you know, the sunken road thing is, it has many, there's many different ways to actually repair or have it reclaimed or adjust. I mean, you can, I mean, if, if allowed, if it's a really bad segment, it's going to cost too much money. You can move, make a trail, move it around and put a switch back in and have it leave and come back in a very short distance to go around it. Or you can actually, the big thing is slowing down water and actually retaining the soil above it. And there's ways to do that, various ways. And now you have, like you have landscape cloth. You actually can, you can actually install things right into there where it holds the soil all the way up. I mean, they have actually make grids that you can put in place if you want to. You can use, or just a simple old raise it above the surrounding landscape and bring it back through crushed gravel and stone. My first trail project after he was doing that in Yosemite, I, I was, I felt like I was on a prison crew. I was crushing rock all day with sledgehammers. But we raised the trail above this wetland and it's on the Pacific Crest Trail. And we covered it with, and now you, you won't even know that was all that rock underneath. And, but everything has a solution. And I hear what you're saying. That's a very common issue, but there are ways around it and then making sure that it's stable. And, and you're also talking, I mean, a lot of the trails that I've worked on, we're talking, it has visitation of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people a day sometimes. So a different thing when, but you do the same exact, whether it's for just a few people, which just sounds like this is just a few people, I think, in the, the management aspect of the usage you're talking here. just a few people, which just sounds like this is just a few people, I think, in the management aspect of the usage you're talking here. So it's actually would recover quicker because it's less used. So, but again, yes, I think that's part of the problem with all these old roads. Were not designed, all the hiking trails, they had no idea it was going to be that many people hiking up them. The environment wasn't their main concern. So, but, but you can, I mean, there, there's, we have the, we have the technology to do things. And it can, a lot of it can be done by hand as well, as machinery and modern fabric, so to speak. So I've seen it done, so it can be done. I don't know if that answers your question at all. I mean, it's almost, it's sight unseen for me, too. It's hard to fathom what you're talking about until I see it.
Well, come visit and see the challenge we face.
Yeah, and, yeah, and.
Whether it makes sense to, to invest a fraction of the resources in, in alternative rights-of-way that would not have the same environmental impacts and impacts on property owners that, that the accidental trails that we now have present.
Well, I, I would love to. And hopefully, when I'm vaccinated here soon, get it out of the house. And, you know, there's two things I want to bring up, too. You know, so there, we are in the, in the middle of our success at Kingdom Trails, if you want to say. When we were getting busier and busier and busier, and we were so close to Linden State University, Northern Vermont University, which had an outdoor recreation program. Every year, we had an erosion, five or six erosion studies done by the students of Linden State College. And all of them come up with varying, and again, you can change a carrying capacity through design, build, construction, and then continued maintenance. And, you know, I mean, we, we had, we had a lot of ridership at Kingdom Trails. And you, you would never know it because of the design and then the actual work done to it. And then planning, obviously. But also with the conflict issue, because we did have hikers, walkers, runners, bikers and horseback riders. We had a conflict study done by JP Norling. I, I used to have it, but now it's, I have a new computer, so I don't know where it is. But it's worth looking up. He actually, he was looking for conflict. And there wasn't conflict because a lot of it, I think, was right here. We are, we're almost, we are a commercial trail back then. But we could educate people at a condensed area, and we knew our problem areas. But we did find people with proper education, outreach, PSAs, closing trails at certain times of the year to, no matter what it is, will help save the trail system and the resource it goes through.
Michael, since you've asked a question once, I'm going to skip you and let Wright ask his question, and then we'll come back to you, Michael. Wright, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious because it seems to me like a lot of the work has already been done with these trails as far as clearing the path and sort of forging the initial trail. Even if there's still work to be done with, with drainage and making them resilient as far as usage goes long-term. I was just wondering if you think, in general, it's better to work on improving what we have rather than making whole new trails, which could be really time and resource-consuming for the town?
Yes, I mean, and again, it's, I think it depends on the actual area. I mean, I've been to some areas where, by the way, us making a new little trail that's only 50 yards long is going to be quicker and easier and done right the first time than trying to fix some really terrible spot or. But again, a lot of times, a lot of spots, we try, you try to fix them and keep the, the traditional route to where it is. So, but I agree that that is, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I don't know without looking at it, but I think everything has a solution, and it's probably simpler than you realize. That's what I personally think. Because I've, right, it'll be, it'll be simpler. These are hills, right? These aren't mountains, right? Are there mountains in Tunbridge?
All about perspective, Tim.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any mountains in Vermont if you come from Montana? I don't know, that's up for debate, too. All right, Michael, you're up.
Yeah, it's a question about legal trails specifically. And, you know, I know that it's not, well, you, you had mentioned, maybe, I guess Carl did, that, that having this discussion is, you know, probably a little further ahead than most towns have, have gone. But I, I think I read somewhere, and maybe this is a question for the Planning Commission, although I wanted to ask you, too. Have you ever heard of a legal trail being moved? At one point in some of my readings, it seems like I came across that, that a landowner can petition the town to move a legal trail, but any work would be at the landowner's expense. But in fact, that could be, that could be a solution to this problem at Dodge Farm. Because, you know, it's, it's agreed that, that, that the legal trail goes very near the house. Yet, it's been like that for a long time. And there probably was good reason for it. And perhaps even the first owners really liked the road going right there because it was maintained to their doorstep. Things do change, I realize. But also that the owner, you know, of the Dodge Farm, he bought that land knowing that there were legal trails there. So it's, it's a little, you know, he, he knew what he was getting into. So, anyway, about legal trails and being moved, have you ever?
No, no, we, we've actually experienced it several times. I mean, as our trail system grew, I mean, we use legal right-of-ways and ancient roads and, and some, right, some of those weren't right, like, right, right in front of someone's doorstep, right? So we maintain the legal right-of-way, but with permission of the landowner, we receive permission to go put another trail, I mean, another treadway to avoid that and to go around, because we, and then, but the legal right-of-way had to be maintained. So it was basically permission to go put that trail there. But we can't, but we didn't go into looking and actually changing where the legal right-of-way was. We left that where it was and just built it around, and it was, it was a Vermont agreement, right? And, you know, and again, we provided insurance for that landowner on that property, too, as the, the state does as well, so.
Tim, can you stick around for two more questions?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I don't, there's, I think, I think I missed Jeopardy, so, here.
All right, Allison Erickson, you get the next one.
Hi, thanks. So I have to tell you, I'm still disturbed about, we're talking about what we're talking about tonight. It seems to me that how to treat the legal trails in Tunbridge as though they're trails that can accommodate horses and bikes and sailors and ATV folk in a capacity.
I lost her. Did you all lose her?
I think, yeah, I think, Allison, we can't hear you anymore.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me, Laura?
A little bit.
You might, maybe if you lose the video, it might help.
Turn off your video.
Yeah, try turning your video off, and then we might be able to hear you better.
Hello, can you hear me now?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
A little bit, yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me, Laura? Can you hear me? I still feel like we're really far off that they have nails that have been in Exor. Can you hear me? You can't hear us in Tunbridge to trails like the trails we have in, in the White Mountains or, or, or anywhere else that accommodate a much higher capacity than our trails have ever had, had before. Like, this all seems like we're, like, getting way ahead of ourselves. Really, what we're talking about is private landowners who want to exclude mountain bikes or bikers from their property. In reality, that's, that's, that's what the, what, what is the issue? That's, you know, the Planning Commission has been dealing with. So the question is, do we shut the trails down altogether? Or do we keep them open altogether? And as far as I can tell, there's been no evidence whatsoever that there's any harm to the land, the community, the landowners by having the trails open. So having a long and in-depth conversation about how to create trails that can accommodate a high capacity of mountain bikers and horseback riders and, and snowmobilers and four-wheelers seems to be like way ahead of ourselves. Why are we having this conversation?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just thought, it's like, no matter what the trail is, that you want to just make sure it doesn't have any. You know, like, once you minimize the amount of the impact it could cause to the environment, and therefore, that argument's gone. So, but that's why I was bringing it up.
No, no, Tim, I couldn't agree with you more that we should be, you know, maintaining our trails and, and expanding, if not, you know, supporting in the first instance, the use that we have already. And if we, and expanding it if possible. But the reality is, the challenge here is a couple of landowners who don't really want mountain bikers on their property. So I don't understand why we're getting into this in-depth conversation about how to create the best trails possible, because that's not really what it's all about. If that was what it's all about, all the legal trails in Vermont would be shut down immediately. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, this sounds like it's, right, that, that is separate from, like, outside of my purview. I mean, again, I mean, I will always encourage folks, and, and I did, it was my job to encourage folks to join our network. And, and what we sold was community health. And, I mean, and that, I mean, that, to me, and also, by the way, you get to go share with your neighbor's property. So this is very symbiotic. It's, it's, you know, allowing people to, to enjoy. And then also to work and compromise as well. I mean, that, that's a big part of it, right? I mean, you don't want it to become a negative, and you want to make sure that it's a positive. So, so whether you have to do it through education or through conservation, then therefore, make it happen. And, and just keep those open lines of communication. I think that was the key to it all. But again, these are assets for folks to use of all ages. It's, like I said, it's a, it's a wonderful thing, and there's not many places that you can do this. It's a very unique. But again, these, these do sound like just connector trails to me. Like, this is, right, this is not about mountain biking, hiking. This is non-motorized multiple use, and it's almost a thoroughfare to go access other places. Am I correct? I mean, it's just part of a system.
Yeah. I couldn't agree with you more about the fact that these trails are, are, are very significant and valuable assets and that we should not consider lightly restricting the use of these trails.
All right, so we're going to move on. I think it says Heather, I think that might be Deb.
I've seen the movie Heathers.
So Heather, go ahead.
This is Deb, can you hear me?
Go ahead, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to add a couple of things. And first of all, and a lot of information in this meeting tonight, and I appreciate it. But if people were to try to fix up the crossroad, you could spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars fixing that up only to have it, I mean, if you, if you spent that kind of money to fix it up, obviously, you would want to maintain it. As I've said before, my biggest problem with the crossroad is that people don't stay on the trail. They go off the trail all the time. Traffic on the crossroad, since I've been living here for over 20 years now, has increased significantly. Last year, there were ATVs, there were dirt bikes, there were hikers, there were bikers, there's skiers, there's snow machines, all-terrain, I can't remember what they're called, but bigger than a four-wheeler. Those kind of buggies go down in there. You know, I tell people when they, if I'm outside and they stop and they ask about the trail, I tell them, go down in there, but stay on the trail. If you get to where it gets really bad and you don't want to go any further and you think you want to go on my land, don't do it. And usually, they turn around and they come back because that's how bad the trail is. Over the years, my brother has fixed the crossroad a few times, trying to be able to use that to get his tractors and his farm equipment back and forth. It doesn't take more than a couple, three years. It's totally eroded and everything's gone again. It's a, it's just a big muddy mess down in there, and it's year-round. And I've found that no matter what you do, I mean, I don't know if I'm going to have to put cable up or something like that, or barbed wire to try to keep people out. But I put the wide horse fence tape, it's like two inches wide. I put that up, and I put no trespassing signs. People cut them, cut the tape, or they take it down, and they, or they just duck under it anyway. I mean, I'm, I work right out by my barn, and people duck under that fence with me standing right there. And it's maddening. And people, like I said, the traffic has just increased so much in the last few years because everybody wants to use it. I get it, but it's through my driveway. It's, you know, when people are cutting my stuff and they're going on my land, even when I put up no trespassing signs, it's really frustrating. I also spoke to Priscilla Farnham yesterday. She asked me to just mention that she doesn't want the trails used for anything more than just walkers. And she said that she's let people use the trails for other things in the past, but she doesn't want to continue to do that. She only wants hikers. And that's kind of the way I feel. There's no place for parking on my end, other than out on Monarch Hill Road. And I think that could just cause a mess. It's a dangerous, I mean, it could be dangerous on the corner. Kind of getting off track a little bit here. But, but as far as fixing up a trail, there's going to have to be a lot of work done to fix the crossroad up so it's usable and it will stay put because it hasn't in the past. So that's my spiel, and thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Tim, do you have any strategies to deal with? I know that you've talked about keeping people on trail, but if there's people that are frequently going off-trail and creating new routes while we get this figured out and have either some maintenance or signage or combination thereof done, potentially, what strategies could landowners use to help direct people to stay on the trail and, and not cross onto their own private property that's not part of the trail system?
So it sounds like there's a section of the legal trail that is just so bad that people veer off on their private land? Is that the issue?
Yeah, that's my understanding is that there's a, a portion of it that's quite wet and possibly some trees down. And there are some, Kevin Rose has provided us with some Strava maps that show exactly where people are deviating off of this one trail onto private property to avoid certain sections of it. And so we do have evidence of this happening because of this, this Strava-based maps. Not saying that that's what everybody's doing, but certainly enough people are doing it to make it appear. Is there something that, that you would recommend as a strategy that we could think about or assist landowners implementing to kind of bring down the tension of, of people not staying on the trail while we get these situations figured out?
There's a variety of things you can use. I mean, it's, it sounds like working on that trail and trying to create a decent treadway for them to use so they're not, first of all, would be a number-one priority. You know, also, you know, we, we had Strava issues. I mean, not issues, but we found that we actually could use Strava. But you know, the designers of Strava live right in the Upper Valley. And we actually, you know, we really wanted to educate people, like, not to ride on trails at certain times of the year, and found that sometimes people did, you know, they would just go out there. And then we had Strava would pop up a little message, "By the way, you're not being a good steward over her trails." I mean, these, they actually can do that by reaching out to them. If that segment, they know who that user is, they can pop up and go, hey, you know, we really prefer you stay on another, I mean, what you're doing is going to impact the privilege for everybody. So, I mean, stop doing it. That, that's, that's the one thing is, you know, I mean, respect landowners is number one, right? So, but again, this, the physical problem, I can't see it, I'd have to see it. But there's so many, I mean, motorized use. So, but again, this, the physical problem, I can't see it, I'd have to see it, but there's so many, I mean, motorized use is difficult. You know, I mean, with, you know, keeping them out, putting boulders up, but it sounds like these are tractor roads and runs and for farmers to cross. And so. You don't want to deter what they're doing. So. I mean, I, I would say the first thing would be get someone out there to fix that portion of that legal trail. I mean, it's. There's no way around it. And, and it's not as expensive as you think it is, or you might have, I don't know what your town highway crews doing these days, but. Whether or not they can do stuff like that as well. But, yeah, I mean, it, it's hard to answer that question until you see it, but there's so many different methods. To keep people on the path. And sometimes we've, I mean, we make it just so ugly. That it's, that you don't want to go there. So what, right, make their path the, the place to stay, but it sounds like. That's an issue, but it's too bad that people. Are disrespecting and doing that. And that sounds like that's something that can be done through a, a PSA or. Somehow a method to tell people. You know, the, the impact that they're having on all users by their. Selfishness, right? I mean, you can't put them in the task center of town in the locks, right? Kind of, right, put them in the. Whipping stone. But, no, it'd have to be, have to be seen. And you know, a lot of times we have landowners that go and help with that, you know. They sometimes have equipment, we had farmers that had the bucket equipment and they would, we work with us and. Help us create a situation for the, the users to, to make it better. And sometimes we would pay for the gas tractor or whatever to make it happen, so. I, 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 hard to tell without seeing it, so.
Yeah, I do want to recognize that we're already five minutes after eight o'clock. So Todd and Betsy, if you have a new question to ask. We'll end with your question, if it's just a comment, if you could hold it for a minute.
I, I, I'll put just a clarification in writing, Laura, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, Todd. So, Tim, I just want to thank you also for your time and energy and insights tonight. It's. Much appreciated, your experience with trails and trail construction all over the place, all over the Northeast is. Very valuable to this conversation and I'm sure. We'll be calling on you again in the future to provide us with some guidance. So. On behalf of the planning commission and the town of Tunbridge, I'd. Extend our gratitude to you spending the evening with us.
Thank you. Like I said, it's been exciting to talk about trails for a little bit. So, thank you. Good luck with all this. I think you guys are doing, doing this such the right way. It's a really civil conversation as well.
Thanks, Tim. So. To wrap up for tonight, just wanted to overview a couple of next steps for what we are planning. As the planning commission. So this is our last meeting, this is the fourth of four that we had lined out. At the beginning, and thank you, and appreciation to everybody who's been with us at every meeting and to folks who've joined along the way and. Everybody who's provided both questions and feedback during the meetings and written comments and testimony and documents and maps and information. It makes. This discussion all the more rich and. Based in evidence and, and truth and people's lived experience, which is really important for all of us to have that perspective. So for next steps, we talked about this last time, but I'll, I'll go over it again. We are planning on, or the planning commission is. Will be walking the trails to get some first person experience with the trails expert. That will be sort of an evidence gathering. Opportunity and mission, and then we'll be sharing that information with the general public. So again, that opportunity will be just for. Planning commission members, possibly some folks from the conservation commission. So that, that crew. Brenda, Janet and Izzy, I believe are working on getting those organized. And of course, landowners will be notified, COVID precautions will be taken. And that was the idea behind moving that to a more evidence gathering for purposes of sharing. Opportunity. So that will be. Those findings will be posted and shared and people will be notified via the normal outlets for that. At town meeting, we'll be talking about where we've been, what our next steps are. We'll have the town member survey. Out then as well, both an online and most likely a paper version for people to do at town meeting. To get some more information about perspectives on the use of legal trails. And then in two weeks, the planning commission will have a meeting to discuss our next steps. And the interim next steps for what we want to do, we fully understand that this. Discussion, conversation, decision-making is. Much more complicated and. Nuanced than I think anyone anticipated at the beginning of this conversation. So we don't anticipate making a policy recommendation to the select board. Or developing a policy recommendation at that meeting. We're going to develop some further next steps and ideas to propose to the select board. So that meeting will be posted because it will be a regular planning commission meeting. There will be a limited time for public comment. It will be a. Meeting of the planning commission to discuss how we want to proceed. So that is all of the updates for this meeting. And again, I just want to thank everybody for taking part in these meetings. It's been really great to see the turnout from Tunbridge and all of the interested parties. And folks who, who want to be of assistance and provide both their. Brain power and in some cases their physical labor and making our trails a better, more functional space for people to use. And make them the, the asset that they are to the town. So I don't know if any of the other planning commission members want to say anything in closing. Offer any appreciations as well before we close for tonight. Okay, well, with that. We will wrap this up for tonight and thank you. As always, feel free to get in touch. Whenever you have something on your mind. Looking forward to continuing this conversation with everybody. So thank you and have a good night.